April 17, 2025, meeting of the Foxborough Board of Appeals. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Is Eric on Zoom? Eric Hogberg?
No.
Okay. So Steve Chaplin's on Zoom. Is Scott Shippey on Zoom?
Yes.
Maybe not. Well, let's proceed. The minutes from--
There he is.
Okay, good. The minutes from the March 20, 2025 meeting. Anybody have any questions or changes?
Brian had one word correction for Eric's last name.
So that's been corrected. So--
Motion to approve--
Motion to approve the minutes. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? As of now, we have no new applications, correct for me?
I have a half an application for that fails, fails street, fails road. It's in the R-15. It's a small, single-family. It's the Chris Reto's guy who wants to turn it into a two-family. So he dropped off the plans and took the application. He has till next Friday to bring everything back.
Okay. So it's possible we'll have a new application in May. I've also had a couple of inquiries about other ones, but I'm not sure if they're at the point of applying. Blair, have you received from the town reappearance?
Yes.
Okay.
I assume that-- All done.
Okay. I assume that Eric has as well, then. Okay, good. Anybody have any other business?
I won't be here next month if you have a meeting. My daughter's graduating college.
Oh, graduating.
Yeah. Very nice.
Absolutely.
So I'll have to get someone to let you in or come to the meeting or something or give you the fob so you can get in.
Okay. Well, hopefully Scott will be here next month.
Oh, yeah. Scott might be back.
So Scott, welcome again, and how are you feeling?
I'm doing much better.
Good.
Doing much better.
Okay. We were next scheduled to go into executive session to discuss litigation strategies, but based on a conversation, first an email, then a conversation I had with counsel, because we're not actually discussing litigation strategy, but rather discussing matters that relate to the agreement for judgment with counsel that is representing J. Cook Realty, we technically cannot go into executive session. However, we can still proceed in open session as far as the matters that I was intending to cover in exec session. Is that correct, Steve?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Is Altoni Almeida on?
I am, Mr. Chair. Good evening.
Okay, good. We'll get to you in a couple of minutes. I just want to recap where things are. The agreement for judgment required J. Cook Realty to file for site plan review and, if necessary, a special permit with the planning board by February 27. That was done. Initially, the planning board was going to proceed with that matter on March 28. However, they did not have a quorum that evening, so as a consequence, did not proceed. They continued the matter till April the 10th, I guess it was. And because of a scheduling conflict that J. Cook Realty's representative, Bill Buckley from Bay Colony, had the matter, did not proceed that night. It's scheduled now for the 24th. Diana?
24th, yep.
Okay. I cannot make it. Is anybody else here able to do so, to observe--
24th of April?
24th of April, next Thursday, to observe, to respond to any questions the planning board may have?
I'm on college tours out of town.
Okay.
Let me see.
Blair, are you able to as well?
24th. Let me see what-- I can be available on the 24th.
Okay. So I'll let the planning board know. I'm going to actually provide a memo to the planning board, just summarizing why the matter is before them, and I'll let them know that Lorraine and Blair are intending to participate.
You don't have to post a meeting because there's only two of us, right?
Well, again, we're there as observers. We're not meeting. It's not a zoning board meeting. The second milestone in the agreement for judgment required the J. Cook Realty to provide, before March 28, a list of items on the 24 East Belcher property that were related to his business and were not related to his business. And we received a very comprehensive 18-page list, which-- another one, I'm thankful for the fact that it was provided as required. I'm also thankful and appreciative of the fact that it's comprehensive. I think we can agree that any of the items that were designated on there with the letter N, therefore as not being part of the towing business, need to be removed. But I think that's where we sort of lose any agreement with Mr. Cook. Before tonight's meeting, the agreement for judgment required a representative of this board, of the building department, and of the health department to enter upon the 24 East Belcher property to verify completeness of that list. Because of the fact that it was so comprehensive and voluminous, it was my suggestion that we not proceed with that site visit. I felt there was no reason to do so. And the agreement for the judgment also requires a meeting tonight with counsel for J. Cook Realty with an effort to reach an agreement with the board relative to the list that has been submitted. Now, earlier this week, Mr. Chaplin received an email from Ms. Almeida relative to the matter. And Brian, I know you have some matters you want to bring to our attention, and I'll let you do so at this point in time.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Brian Almeida on behalf of J. Cook Realty. So Attorney Chaplin and I have had, I think, several productive conversations about the case this week, and I had a very positive conversation with Mr. Cook this week as well about the case. He had indicated to me that, at least in his estimation, a fair number of the items on the property have already been removed, and that if someone were to drive by and observe, they might not notice that because more items that were further back in the property have been brought to the front. And the reason for that is that he says that in the next two or three weeks, he has people who are coming, takers, to remove a lot of the other items. So at least from Mr. Cook's perspective, when we were sort of weighing how best to proceed in terms of narrowing our areas of disagreement with the board, his suggestion was it would sort of be nonproductive to spend much time focusing on items that were going to be removed within the next two or three weeks. So based on that, it was at least our suggestion that perhaps a site visit, maybe three weeks or four weeks out, would be a good opportunity for the board to sort of reassess what items remain on the property and then which items there still is disagreement about whether or not they're related to the business.
So essentially, what you're suggesting, then, is wait until our next meeting to do what the agreement for judgment suggests be done tonight?
No, I don't think that's necessarily my suggestion because I think that, at least in my reading of the agreement for judgment, it does contemplate there being this meeting to discuss areas of disagreement, and then there being a site visit in which we would further drill into whether or not there's disagreement, and then there's a process to designate a neutral to make a determination. I suppose my thought is, rather than belabor any disputes about what's related to the business and what isn't by discussing items that are no longer going to be there in two or three weeks, it might make more sense to address it then.
Okay. So would we be able to--
Wait a minute.
Would we be able to get this list, which we have now revised, to show which items have been removed from the property?
Mr. Chair, do you want me to answer that directly?
Yes.
I think that's a reasonable ask, and I think that would probably help orient us in terms of figuring out what's left in dispute.
Thank you.
So that can be done.
Kurt, are there any questions, comments?
I guess my only question would be, how many items on the list have been removed already? Do we have even a vague number?
I don't. I can ask, but I was told that it's a fair number. But the reason that it's sort of couched is because I think Mr. Cook was concerned that if I said a fair number of items were removed and then someone were to drive by and it appears to be the same, not to be discouraged by that. And his explanation for that is that some of the items that are now closer to the street are there because they're going to be imminently removed.
You yourself haven't been by there, have you, Brian?
Let me see. Well, I actually have occasion to be a couple streets over once a week, so I think I might have driven by there since our site visit. I don't know how recently.
And is it your opinion, other than what you've been told, that items have been removed?
Well, I think that I was heartened by the explanation that if they've been removed, they've been replaced by items in the rear that are going to be removed. Let's put it that way. It was not obvious to me from the street that items had been removed.
I mean, I took a ride by earlier today, and I was expecting to see a lot of items on the street, and I saw nothing. Now, that could mean that there were items there yesterday that have been disposed of, and it could mean that something else.
You see--
But I was hoping to see something there that would reflect upon what you have been told by your client.
I have a question for Attorney Almeida. Do you know what a FL-70 is or a KW frame?
I don't.
Neither do I. So that's why this list is completely useless, because this is just a collection of words that don't-- that has no meaning to us. Because I don't know if I went there now, if there is an FL-70, or if that FL-70 has been removed, because nobody in this room, including the people on the screen, have any idea what an FL-70 is. So to me, this is just another gaming of the system. And I appreciate, Brian, you're doing your job, you know, but this is just another delay tactic, and I don't know how anyone does just call that what it is. You know, does anybody know what this stuff is? No. And then when you say, well, go by there, the old stuff from the back is being moved from the front, is a ridiculous statement for you to make. Okay?
Well, I'm going to disagree that it's a ridiculous statement to make. I mean--
You're free to disagree with that, but can you understand where we're coming from? Clearly, we don't know what this stuff is, and clearly, we don't know if it's there or not there. Do you know? Can you take this list, Mr. Almeida, and go down there and verify if these things are there or not?
I--
But you're claiming that he's doing it. But you're claiming that you can do that, and you can make that happen. And you can't. Nobody can. This list is worthless.
I guess I'm unsure what to specifically--
It's insulting to me, at this point in this whole endeavor, for us to be given this list that is of no value.
I'm not quite sure how to respond to that.
You should be ashamed of yourself at this point.
I'm sorry?
You should be ashamed of yourself for giving us this list that you ought to know is of zero value to anybody on this board.
Well, in fairness, I didn't produce the list.
Yes, but--
On my list--
You didn't produce the list, but did you look at the list?
I did.
Do you know what any of this stuff is? No.
Again, I'm going to comment on the FL-70 in particular. I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what any of these things are.
So in fairness, you know, Blair has gone through the list, item by item, and--
That's not the point, Brian. The point is, the list was provided as it is. We're smokescreen.
Brian, you don't have Blair's annotations, but he's gone through it, and his opinion is the vast majority of the items here are not related to a towing business. They're related to a construction business. Fair enough, Blair?
Yeah, I think vast majority is probably an understatement. I think, you know, if you think, if you would average it out to 25 items on each page, 18 pages is 450, say 425 to 450, and I would easily estimate more than 400 of these being related to either trucks, equipment, construction equipment, parts, tires. I think that it's really a stretch to find-- you might have a few tools, maybe a welder, that sort of stuff, a bench here, various items, maybe a toolboxes, but the vast majority of this stuff, in my opinion, has very little to do with towing.
Yeah.
So next time--
Mr. Chair, if I can--
--you come before us, Mr. Almeida, next time you come before us, I want you to tell me what an S-1900 is in an FL-70, okay?
Well, then--
Be prepared to.
The next step would have been to get a neutral party to cull through this. I'm going to-- I know we want to give the benefit of the doubt to anybody, but let's assume, for argument's sake, that Mr. Cook is disposing of items on the property that have nothing to do with the towing business. And he's reported to his counsel, as Mr. Almeida has indicated, that he feels that a significant portion of the property can be removed within the next two to three weeks. So what I would like to do, rather than-- and we've identified a couple of parties who could act as neutral mediators--
Sure.
--through Blair's industry contacts. But I think what I would like to do, or like to suggest to the board, is that we give Mr. Cook a few more weeks to hopefully work in that direction that he's indicated he's working in, that at some point before our May meeting, this list be revised to indicate which items are no longer on the property, which items are specifically, in his mind, related to the towing business, with the thought that the items that are in either of those two categories will at some point in time be eliminated from the property, and that we then engage in the site visit that otherwise was intended. And at our meeting in May, we try to work with you, Mr. Almeida, and Kurt's correct, you're going to have to get some more information for your own benefit--
Yeah.
--as to what is or is not related to the towing business. And we try to, you know, reach an agreement that evening at our May meeting with you, and to the extent that we can, wonderful the extent that we can, then we go to the neutral party.
You know, Mr. Almeida, if I'm looking at this list here, when you're working for a client, you're acting as their agent. You're acting as an extension of them. And for you to come to us with this handwritten list that has no descriptions of anything next to it whatsoever, and you might as well have written it in Greek or Latin, because we don't know what this is. So you are not carrying out your duty properly. And if my lawyer would have given a list like this to one of my clients, he wouldn't be my lawyer much longer.
I'll leave that where it is, but, Mr. Chair, just to sort of, I think, hopefully put an optimistic bow on this, if I could. My conversations with my client this week were candid, and they were along the vein of essentially pointing out what I think is a reasonable conclusion, is that, looking at this list, the number of items that were designated as not being involved in the business were, I would agree, less than I expected. And when I addressed that with my client, sort of in the lead-up to this meeting, in evaluating what we were going to do about the request with respect to a neutral, I think that my client was very understanding of the reality that there needs to be a significant amount of removal, whether or not there's agreement between the parties as to whether or not it's related to the business. So I think that, again, only being the messenger, as you put it, Mr. Chair, and only being able to represent what I was told by him, he seemed to indicate that he thought that if we were doing the site visit three or four weeks out, there would be some progress to be shown.
I would have expected my counsel to tell me that a list like this is completely unacceptable. I thought you would have known better.
And looking forward here, I think that, you know, if there's 425 to 450 items here, and we're expecting that some reasonable progress here, or to take care of this in the next three weeks, that's an average of 20 items a day, and most of these items--
Well--
Most of these items are huge, so--
But he does have until the end of September, though, to ultimately--
But that's a lot of work to do in a pretty narrow window, so.
And we want a more descriptive list.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So at the point that we receive back the list that has crossed out, you know, like removed, 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 marked this list up so that we can see before and after, at that time, why do we need to wait to have the neutral party come in and say what this is? Once we have what's been removed--
Mm-hmm.
Can someone--
Well, a neutral-- So let's just say, for argument's sake, there are 400 items on here. And between the items that come off, you know, over the course of the next several weeks, and the items that would be identified as being not related to the towing business, we end up-- let's just say for argument, we end up with 150 items that he says are related to the towing business. I think, as Kurt indicated, for our benefit, we're going to have to know exactly what-- I mean, if it says a tow truck, I think we know what that is.
Yeah.
But, you know, if he says an air compressor--
Or an S-100, it's purposely being deceptive.
Well, demonstrate--
Oh, I'm going to again disagree with that. There's no intention of being deceptive.
We need some information at that point as to why that particular item is related to a towing business. And if we agree, that's one thing. If we don't agree, then that's when we go to the neutral--
How do we know what an S-100 does? You have to know that we don't know what that is. As an attorney, you have to know that.
Again--
It's dereliction of duty.
There's no intent-- Look, again, I'm only able to pass along the message that I've communicated by my client. If I don't know what an S-100 is, I can't put it on the list unless it's there.
But I think, you know, again, if you're going to be sitting down with us in May with a list of 150 items, or whatever it may be, that Mr. Cook says are related to his towing business, and Blair, because of his expertise and experience, you know, as a DPW director in Norfolk and the other positions he's held in the past, says, you know, these 50 items over here, to my mind, have nothing to do with the towing business. You're going to have to convince us why, whether it's an S-100 or an air compressor or a generator--
Right.
--is or is not related to that business, so--
And haven't we been trying to get this--
So you've got homework. You'll have homework to do as well over the course of the next month.
And my frustration is because not of today. This has been going on for a very long time, and you know it.
Well, I can't speak to that. This is my first meeting before you.
Of course you can.
I can't. This is the first time I've appeared before you. This is the first time I'm addressing it with you. I can't speak for what's happened in the past.
You know, just an example, kind of, Kurt keeps dealing with the S-100. On the first page, you know, it says Ford Ranger. If Mr. Cook comes back and says that's related to his towing business, you're going to have to be able to tell us in May why it is, or why you believe it is, or why he is convinced you that it is.
But that's what this list was supposed to do in the first place.
So-- So really--
That's what this ridiculous list was supposed to do. And now we're delaying it more because Mr. Almeida looks at this list and thinks, oh, well, we should all know what an S-100 is.
I don't think that.
Then why did you give us this list?
Because I was obligated to provide a list that my client produced by that date, and I did.
Scott, we haven't heard from you.
But wasn't the list supposed to be-- The list was supposed to be a description of things.
It just says a list of items that are--
Used for the business.
Yeah.
So there are four or five items that have an N next to it.
Correct.
So those--
Oh, it's only four or five items? Okay.
Well, more for eight.
Not very many more.
Yeah.
Scott, any--
Other than the obvious items on the list, I would refer to Blair and the third party to make reference to them if they are indeed referencing to towing. But again, I can't speak. Like Mr. Almeida, I'm not aware of these items and what they do. I mean, I could guess and summarize--
We shouldn't guess. We're supposed to have a list, a descriptive list.
And in my opinion, going even further, you know, having pretty good, solid knowledge of everything that's on this list, or certainly most of it, I think there's going to be a lot of back and forth as to how this pertains to towing, you know, to take it one step further.
Yeah, I mean, my-- I guess my biggest issue, concern, is that I was expecting a specific designation of which items are towing-related, which items are used in the towing business, and he really has not, you know, done that. So other than a list of every item that's on the property, and then Blair going through it and saying-- and Blair giving an opinion-- I like Blair's opinion, but, you know, I don't know where Mr. Cook stands in that regard, so I don't know where we are as far as going forward in that respect. So what I would like to see is an update of this list by, say, May 8. And the update would indicate the items that have been removed from the property as of that date, and the items that-- and he can designate it with an asterisk, or he can highlight it, or a checkmark, or what have you, the items that he believes are specifically related to his towing business. And then on either May 13 or 14, we conduct the site visit that otherwise we were scheduled to do before April 17. And then on May 15, we meet with you to discuss, really, the items that he has designated as being-- that he has designated as being related to the towing business. And at that point, you're going to have to educate yourself and be aware of what those various items are--
Exactly.
--so that you can say to us, it's related to the towing business because-- you know, he designates 15 cones, you know, orange cones. It's related to the towing business because when he's towing a car, he's got to put the cones on the road.
That's what we were expecting in the first place.
So that's what you're going to have to do when you meet with us on May 15. And if we can come to an agreement, terrific. If not, that's when we retain the neutral party. Scott, you raised--
I imagine Mr. Cook will be here for that meeting, if that's all right?
I'm sorry?
I imagine that Mr. Cook should be there for that meeting.
Steve, what do you think?
I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea, but I was going to make a slightly different suggestion. And my suggestion was going to be that the revised list be submitted in something of a memorandum form. Doesn't have to be super formal, but I think it might be helpful, sort of to frame the issue a little bit more high-level. The agreement for judgment that we have with Mr. Cook, and what's not changing, is that any item that's not associated with the business still needs to be removed from the property not later than August 31. What we're sorting out tonight is how do we get there? So in step one was sorting out what's related and what's not related. And, you know, so tonight, we could have had a line-by-line discussion about 400 items, plus or minus, and we probably would have been here till 1:00 in the morning. And I'm not sure we would have made much progress. If the list is really going to be 100 items in May, I think it would be the best use of everybody's time if there were-- in the list, the way the agreement for judgment reads, it's supposed to be two categories, related to the business, not related to the business. If related to the business, meaning Mr. Cook feels that it should remain on the property, that he should be entitled to keep it on the property, I would suggest that the list include-- include an explanation as to why it's related to the business. I understand that's not technically specified in the agreement for judgment, but I would submit that it's within the spirit of the agreement, and it will, in my view, make the process more efficient and will be better for all parties involved.
A modicum of common sense would have dictated that.
And I think that I would also try to keep this list in the order and the way that it is, so we don't reinvent the wheel going forward. As things on this original list come off the list, so that we're not...
Just cross them off.
Right, so we can cross them off, so that we're not playing, you know, we're not doing apples to oranges here and trying to reinvent this a month from now. Keep this original list, cross them off as we go, have, you know, the right side of the page can have the descriptions, they can be against, you know, my descriptions of them, so that we can see if we've got issues going down the path where we need to discuss and get explanations. But I think that's the easiest way to go about it.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Just to give you a little heads up, on, I think it's the 14th and 15th of May, I can make myself available for the meeting that night. However, I have a two-day conference. So, and both Gil and I will be out of the office those two days. So, the site visit should take place prior to those two dates, if possible, maybe the 13th, which is a Tuesday, I do believe.
Mm-hmm.
That would be best for us to have a representative there, because both of us will be at a two-day conference.
Okay.
For training event.
So, what we're talking about is, you know, by the close of business on May 8, a list to go to Mr. Chaplin, that would sort of X-out, cross-out items that as of that date have been removed from the premises, that would indicate or specify which items Mr. Cook believes are related to the towing business, and why, a short explanation as to why. I think you're probably going to have to do that on a separate page, with the thought that everything else will at some point between May 8 and the end of August be removed from the premises. And then on May 13, we'll have the site walk, and really, that's pretty much going to be geared towards our observing the items that Mr. Cook believes are related to the business. And then on May 15, we meet with you, Mr. Almeida. And I guess, Steve, I want to go back to my question, should Mr. Cook be there that evening?
I think he should be. The way that I'm envisioning the proceedings is that the list will be submitted in advance. There'll be some level of explanation within the list. Like you said, Mr. Chair, concise explanation, doesn't have to be overly complicated, but that way we understand what we're talking about and what the explanation or argument is as to why that particular item is related to a towing business. If the... It could be, I really hope there aren't 100 items at that point, but if there are 100 items at that point, it could be that with respect to several of the items, could be 10, could be 50, could be 80, that the explanation satisfies the board's concerns, because the explanation tells the board what the item is, and perhaps the board, in discussing amongst itself, agrees that that item is related. Obviously, we don't know until we see the list. But my point is, the list, the pared-down list together with the explanation should be sort of the first level of review. But the board may have questions directly for Mr. Cook, and may want to more or less take testimony from him to gauge if they believe a particular explanation is credible or not credible, because there may be some judgment calls here, I'm imagining. So, with that as the backdrop, I think it makes sense for Mr. Cook to be in attendance, although I think the list will be the first level of review. I think presentation by his attorney will be the second level of review. And then if there's anything that his counsel's not able to specifically address, or if the board questions a judgment call and wants to hear from Mr. Cook directly, I think at that point, it makes sense to have him there.
And then obviously, there's an impasse as far as any items, then we go to the neutral party.
That's absolutely right, Mr. Chair. The other piece of it is, if the neutral part, the agreement contemplates the neutral party, but it also contemplates us perhaps needing to be in front of a judge, and obviously, if we're in front of a neutral party, there's a cost associated with that. So, I think it's in the town's best interest for us to go through some additional process now to try to pare down the list and pare down whatever disagreement there may be. And if we end up in front of a judge, and I'm sure Attorney Almeida will agree with me on this, sort of the first thing a judge looks for in any type of a civil dispute is what efforts have the parties engaged in to try to narrow the areas of dispute. So, I think the time we're spending now is well-spent, although I obviously understand that, you know, this has been a longstanding issue in the board, rightly is eager to bring it to full resolution.
So, this list that we have will show strikes of what's been removed?
Let's say, you know, again, requiring it by May 8.
Yeah.
As of that date, it'll show what has been removed.
Right, and then there'll be a column with a note that says...
Or on a separate page.
Or a separate page.
What he...
You know, unless someone wants to put this on a spreadsheet, you know, would be the easiest thing to do.
That might be a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, if these could be put on an Excel spreadsheet, or something like that, that just lines all those comments up.
And I'll have to say, Mr. Almeida, the last thing is that, as a business owner myself, I am very sympathetic to the struggles of running a business. So, I am an advocate for small business owners like Mr. Cook. However, giving us a list like this is disrespectful, and coming here unprepared is also disrespectful. And we've shown Mr. Cook a great deal of respect and a great deal of generosity with our time. We're all volunteers.
So, look, my preparation for this evening was to have a discussion about the best path forward. I was unprepared to discuss every item on the list, because that wasn't the nature of tonight's discussion. But rest assured that based on our conversation tonight, based on the homework that I've been given, I'll be prepared to do so next time. But with respect to, again, recalibrating the expectations for this evening in terms of what I understood the marching orders to be, which was to plot a good path forward, again, in before the lead-up to this meeting, there were discussions about whether or not we would skip this step and go straight to the third-party neutral. And the sentiment that I got from Mr. Cook, that I sort of want to leave everybody with, is he said, "I'm well-aware of the fact that I need to have this property cleaned up by August 31st. That's the drop dead deadline. I'd rather spend my time doing that than worrying about the neutral if I don't have to." So, at least from my perspective, if the attitude is, I want to spend my time cleaning up the property, that's where the energy should be spent, but rest assured that we're going to do what we can to make the homework be done in the best way that it can. I certainly can't promise an Excel spreadsheet, but I'll do my best to organize it in a way so that our next discussion can be more productive.
Thank you. And I guess maybe, I'm not sure about where you say... Are you saying to put everything here on an Excel sheet? Or, I mean, I would be satisfied myself just with...
What's left.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm not so much as... The towing, what he says is part of the towing business to be on a separate sheet.
Right. What I was going to say is that, you know, I personally have a pretty good idea of what this is. What I would like to hear next month is how it's used in, how it pertains to a towing business, because I see so many items here that, in my mind, have no impact on the towing business at all. So, beyond just what this is, how is it used? And I think we should be prepared to hear that.
Brian, if we take the list that you provided, and the various items that have been removed and will be removed by May 8, he just puts a line through them, and then on a separate sheet, you put down, or have him put down, the items that he believes are specifically related and required in his towing business, with a brief explanation, other than something that's, you know, obvious. I mean, I think one of the items on here is a fire extinguisher. I mean, he certainly needs a fire extinguisher, no matter what he's doing. I don't have any problem with that. But the items that wouldn't be obvious to us, because we're not in that business, that are not obviously obvious to you, because you're not in the business, or to Mr. Chaplin, or to Mr. Shippey, they may be, you know, they may be... Maybe Diana has a better sense of them, I don't know. But if you would just have him indicate to you, whether you're, you know, preparing the list, or he's preparing that list, what those items are. You know, for example, you know, there were several generators listed on here. If any of those generators, for whatever reason, are used in the towing business, why? What's the purpose of it? Just a brief explanation. If we have to ask more, we'll ask more. Have that on a separate list, and everything that's either not on that separate list, the towing list, or not X-ed out, we'll assume is going to be eliminated from the property by the end of August. That, to me, would be satisfactory.
Understood.
And then we can just concentrate on the towing list with the, you know, the notion and the hope that by August 31st, everything else will be gone.
And that was precisely the intention of my suggestion tonight, was, rather than dispute a larger number of items, if some of these items are going to be gone, the dispute about them would be moot.
Yeah.
So that was really the impetus for my message tonight.
Steve, can you put all this in writing?
I believe I can. A couple of quick questions, Mr. Chair. The site walk on May 14th is that...
I think it would have to be May 13th in order to get somebody from the building apartment there.
Mr. Chair, if I could chime in on that, could we potentially do the 12th?
If we did in the morning, I can make it.
That'll be my first day back, full-time, but yes, I will make myself available.
Or we have Gil?
Or Gil. Gil or I will be there. Yes, one of us can make that. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Excellent. And in full candor, I had the same scheduling difficulty, so the 12th works well for me.
Okay, as long as it's, say, 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning, I can make it. I've got to be elsewhere at 12:30.
Works well for me.
Would you like me to be a part of that?
Maybe you instead of me. It might be better to have you instead of me.
I'm free that morning, so if that's...
Mr. Chair, if I could, ask Mr. Almeida or Steve to sit there and send out an invite, so I can get that in my calendar as fast as possible?
I will send one right now. Would anybody else like to be included?
Include Blair.
Okay, Blair, I'm including Blair. Anybody else?
I'll be in.
Probably include Matt Brennan, just in case.
Absolutely. Okay.
If not, I believe you could have a representative as well.
And then we, our next meeting is on the 15th of May.
Yes.
Do we have anything for that?
Not yet. But we probably, there's a good likelihood.
Yep.
So, Brian, one reason I'm suggesting to have the list, you know, by the close of business on May 8 is so we can get it to, you know, to me and to Blair and the other members of the board, so that certainly the individuals who will be on the site walk will have an opportunity to review it over the course of the weekend.
That seems reasonable to me, Mr. Chair.
Now, by that point in time, the planning board will at least start the site plan review. Do you still think they're going to continue it, Diana?
I didn't know if they wanted to do a site walk also, because they're, this is the first they are hearing of this.
Mm-hmm.
And they're asking for a contractor yard, I believe.
So if they continue it from the 24th, their next meeting will be May 8?
The 8th and the 22nd are their two meetings in May.
Okay. That probably wouldn't make sense to have a site walk at the same time, because it's for different purposes, so, okay.
And I think I would expect that, when the site walk happens, that there's nothing new that arrives, or...
Well, that's...
How do we know that?
Right?
There's no way we know that.
But I mean, I would expect to not see something that's not on the list.
Well, how do we know that?
Right.
That should go without saying.
It should go without saying, but I'm not a big fan of surprises either.
There'll be two F-70s there next time we go. Who knows?
I mean, the other thing, in addition to no new equipment there, or items, we're not going to extend the August 31 date, so that's sacrosanct, and...
Mr. Chair, again, I... An attorney's only as good as the information that they get, but, again, my conversations with Mr. Cook this week were of an optimistic tone, and the awareness of the fact that that August 31st date, as you put it, is sacrosanct, and that his priority was maximizing the use of the time between now and then to get the property where it needs to be. So I think there was awareness of that fact, very much.
Any other questions, or comments, or what have you? Scott, anything? The whole body shakes.
Do not turn the head.
Steve, so you'll put something on paper for the benefit of all of us?
Excuse me?
Steve?
I would be happy to do that, Mr. Chair. Who would you like me to send that to?
Send it to Diana. Well, send it to me as well, but send it to Diana, and she'll distribute it to everyone, and obviously to Mr. Almeida.
I will. Do I have Diana? I do, yes.
Okay.
Okay. I will... Would you like that on a separate document, or is an email sufficient?
From my perspective, email's sufficient.
Fantastic. I'll put that together as soon as we sign off.
Lorraine, any further questions or comments?
No, thanks.
Kurt?
Steven, Scott, Brian, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Good to meet you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we got anything else? Any other business?
No. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
On the paper.